Welcome to the regular meeting, City Council, December 5th, 2016. I'd like to ask Councilman Forrest Fleming if he would lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you much, please be seated. This time, I'd like to call on Reverend Heather Kilburn of St. Matthew's United Methodist Church to lead us in an invocation, please.
I invite you to pray with me. Gracious God, you are loving and good, present in the midst of our lives. During this holiday season, we thank you for our many blessings and the joy of this season. Be with those who struggle with loneliness, financial hardship, and grief, for whom Christmas is not always very merry. I pray for our city leaders tonight. May you guide their hearts and minds to decisions that are best for our community. Give them courage to make the unpopular decisions when needed and wisdom to help our community to grow, to be a place where people can work hard for a living wage, where every child grows up prepared to succeed, and every sick or disabled person is taken care of. Gracious Lord, guide our community, our leaders, and our nation in all we do. Amen.
Heather, thank you so much. This time, I'd like to introduce City Council. My far right is Forrest Fleming, City Council. Louie Vina, our City Attorney. I'm Ronnie Thompson, your Mayor. Sally Sandy, our City Manager. Sidney Simmons, Councilman. John Cantrell, Councilman. And Carolyn Richardson is our Recording Secretary tonight, and Becky Brinkley is our Interpreter for the deaf community. We have two retiree resolutions. The first resolution is for Sherri Hunt from the Public Safety Department. I'd like to read that resolution, please. Whereas Sherri L. Hunt was employed by the City of Morganton as Parking Enforcement Officer in the Public Safety Department on July 6th, 1998, promoted to Telecommunicator on August 7th, 1999, transferred to BLET, Public Safety Officer Trainee, on August 21st, 2000, transferred to Public Safety Officer Trainee on December 18th, 2000, promoted to Public Safety Officer on July 10th, 2001. And whereas Sherri L. Hunt has faithfully served the City of Morganton in the Public Safety Department and has given of her time and efforts for the benefit of the citizens of Morganton for 18 years and 8 months. And whereas Sherri L. Hunt retired from the Public Safety Department November 1st, 2016. And whereas the Morganton City Council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of Sherri L. Hunt and express their appreciation for a job well done. Now therefore be it resolved by the City of Morganton that the Mayor present this resolution to Sherri L. Hunt, adopted this 5th day of December, 2016. Ronnie Thompson, Mayor. Sally Sandy, City Clerk. I'll ask Sherri Hunt to come forward, and I'll ask Councilman Forrest Fleming if he'll present the resolution. We need a motion to accept that resolution?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes.
I enjoyed working for the city the whole time, not just for public safety, but with all the departments. Thank you.
Sherri, hold one second. We'd like to have another presentation, I believe. I'm not sure. Tony, are you making that presentation? Okay.
On behalf of Public Safety and the City of Morganton, I'd like to present Sherri with her duty style arm and her fire helmet as well.
You've got enough to carry. Bring your husband up here to help.
I got it.
Sherri, before you leave, just one second. We do need to make this official. We need a motion to declare a surplus weapon Glock 22, Gen IV, serial number XHY540, and Fire Service Helmet Model 1044DSB, serial number 10074952, be declared surplus, sold for $1, and presented to retired PSO Sherri Hunt.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passes.
I am paying the dollars. Thank you, Sally.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have another resolution honoring Damon Steve Pritchard. I'd like to read that resolution. Whereas Damon Steve Pritchard was employed by the City of Morganton as Equipment Operator, Street Sweeper, in the Public Works Street Department on June 6th, 2005, transferred to Equipment Operator, Street Maintenance Worker, in the Public Works Street Department on December 12th, 2005, promoted to Street Supervisor in the Public Works Street Department on March 24th, 2008. And whereas Damon Steve Pritchard has faithfully served the City of Morganton in the Public Works Department and has given of his time and talents for the benefits of the City of Morganton for 11 years, 11 months. And whereas Damon Steve Pritchard retired from the City of Morganton as Streets Supervisor in the Public Works Street Department on December 1st, 2016. And whereas the Morganton City Council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of Damon Steve Pritchard and express their appreciation for a job well done. Now therefore be it resolved by the City of Morganton that the Mayor present this resolution to Damon Steve Pritchard, adopted this the 5th day of December, 2016. Ronnie Thompson, Mayor. Sally Sandy, Clerk. I'll ask Councilman Sidney Simmons if he'll make that presentation.
Steve, it seems like every time a citizen calls me and I've got a problem, when I call you, you show up. I don't know what we're going to do now. We might have to sign you back down.
Thank you, sir. Steve, would you like to say something, please?
I appreciate all the help here in the city. Scott, Jack Parks, a few other ones, for all the help they give me, and I enjoyed working for the city more.
Thank you. We need a motion to present that resolution. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Next is, under Public Advocacy, we have some upcoming events. The Holiday Farmers Market is Saturday, December 10th, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. We have the Downtown Christmas Parade, Thursday, December 15th, at 6:00 p.m. Some people wonder why it's so late this year. A lot of our Good Band members are out, and we'll be celebrating the 75th anniversary of Pearl Harbor. It's a great trip, and they'll be back, I think, Friday or Saturday on the trip. So we decided to have our Christmas Parade on December 15th. At Kama, Rudolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer the Musical will be Thursday, December 15th, at 7:30. We still have carriage rides that will continue on Friday and Saturday evenings in downtown. I'd like to also, from a personal note, like to congratulate Jeff Britton, who was selected this afternoon as the new Chairman of the County Commissioners, and Johnny Carswell, the Vice Chair. We look forward to working with those individuals for the next four years, along with the other county commissioners. Another note, please. This is the last meeting before New Year's Eve, and I know some of our citizens love to shoot fireworks off on New Year's Eve. I'd like to caution them, please, with the dry weather we've had, and I know the burning ban's been lifted, but please, please be careful and use caution when you shoot fireworks on New Year's Eve. We have with us Tom Anderson, the Public Safety Risk Management Consultant with the North Carolina League of Municipalities. Tom, would you come forward, please?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, and thank you for the time tonight to recognize your police department. I spent some considerable time with your department in reviewing risk management principles and some of the policies and the practices in place, and I've got to tell you that I left very impressed. I've worked with lots of agencies. I've yet to meet with one that does law enforcement at a great level and has responsibilities of working fire service as well. You have a unique department, and I guess, for lack of a better word, they are super public servants. No other way to describe it. Just to give you a little bit of background, back in 2013, the league formed a Chiefs Advisory Committee, and this includes 12 chiefs from across the state representing a variety of sizes of agencies. They came together to review claims, lawsuits, a lot of the risks associated with law enforcement, such as pursuits, use of force, training issues. Basically, if you see it on the news, we've reviewed it and looked at some of the best practices and worst practices related to those issues, in trying to ascertain what are the lessons learned. In doing so, we identified, at this point, 40 different distinctive categories in law enforcement related to risk management. We also developed a set of dimensions based on best practices and peer-reviewed by our panel of chiefs. This whole process has been supported by the North Carolina Chiefs Association, and basically, the process unfolds with a very comprehensive policy review from start to finish of what is written as far as what your agency does and adheres to. That is then followed up with a comprehensive onsite analysis, where I interview officers, I look at the equipment, look at the facility, look at your day-to-day operations, and look to see how your operations and your policies relate to best practices. I'm proud to say that, in spite of having public service on the police and fire side, your department exceeded expectations in many areas. Proud to say that. Also, something that really stood out to me, early on, Andy Smith and Russ both contributed to this process as well. Also, your chief was a standout in how he took ownership in this initiative from start to finish, and the whole agency for that matter. So, in saying that, I've spent 24 years in law enforcement, and I've spent seven years as a police chief myself, and your agency did a great job, a standout agency. So, at this time, if the chief would step forward, this is a plaque recognizing these efforts. "North Carolina League recognizes the Morganton Public Safety Department for completing the law enforcement risk management review and proactively serving the community in a professional manner while taking steps to minimize risks to our citizens and officers," presented December 5th, 2016. Great job, Chief. Thank you.
Chief, would you like to say something, please?
I'd just like to thank Chief Anderson for taking the time to represent the league to come in and look at our department and look for ways that we could improve in presenting us with this award, and for the support that you as council provide that gives us the ability to do our jobs. And this award really belongs to all of our officers who serve our community and does it well. Thank you all very much.
Next on our agenda is the audit presentation. Tom McNish or Karen, which one's going to do it?
First.
Tom's going first. Welcome to Morganton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'd like to start out by thanking Ms. Duncan and her team for all the hard work they put in to get the audit done. You know, as y'all may expect, the audit process is arduous anyway. It's a real test when you've got a new group like ourselves coming in after having worked with the same group for a long, long time. So, we definitely put Ms. Duncan and our team through the rigors of the audit. For us being, anytime we come in and look at a municipality for the first time, you know, we're going to be very stringent anyway, but on a first-time audit, you know, we're going to have a very thorough process, even more so than usual, because we're going through and we're documenting our understanding of how y'all work. Every municipality is unique. So, we definitely went through a detailed process there to get this first year launched. And so, I think, going forward, we got a really good platform to build on and continue to improve the process going forward. A few notes, I guess, very much on the positive side, we got what we needed in accurate form and in a fluid manner, and that's very important for our process, because if you have one without the other, then that can be a red flag for us. So, we not only got what we needed in a timely manner, which indicated to us that the record-keeping had been maintained throughout the year, not just for when we showed up, but it was also in accurate form so that we could audit it, we could perform our tests on it, so that we could issue the required opinions that are required for the city. So, essentially, we've issued, as you have every year, four different reports. The first report is our opinion on whether your financial statements are stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. That's important for anybody who picks up your financials, whether it's a creditor or a granting agency, they want to see that opinion from an independent third-party audit firm that the financial statements are fairly stated, so that they can rely on them for credit decisions or compliance decisions, granting decisions. The second report that we issue, actually, these are kind of two-in-one. You have grant compliance. Of course, you receive grant funds both from the federal and the state level. Those come with a lot of strings attached, that you follow very detailed requirements to ensure that you're handling those funds appropriately. We actually perform a separate audit to go in and look at the compliance for how those funds are being spent. Are they being spent in accordance with the grant requirements? And the good news is, in performing our audit process, we did not find any instances where there was material noncompliance with those grant requirements. Had we found that, that would be something that we would include in our report and what we would want to see addressed going forward. I forgot to mention, going back to the financial statement audit opinion, we did issue what is called an unmodified opinion. That's where you want to be. That's a clean opinion, and essentially, that says that, based on the testing we performed, we were able to give an opinion that the financial statements are fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So, all good news there. Again, I think a very good testament to your finance department. We will continue to be vigilant. Our process, our standards, our professional standards require that we keep the audit process unpredictable, and that we're vigilant in terms of our skepticism in coming in and having a fresh approach every year. We did have one restatement that was brought to the attention by your finance team in terms of the billing method for your cable services. Your folks came to us and said, "We feel like we should restate prior-year net position and fund balance." We concurred with that. I think it's a good sign that y'all's folks came to us and said, "We want to get this right, and here's what we suggest should be the adjustment." We evaluated that, and again, concurred with it, and that restatement is included in your financials to get the financial statement presentation the way it's supposed to be. So, again, I think, definitely consider this a very good report for this first year, and as I mentioned before, we want to be able to build on that and continue to improve the process. And, Mr. Mayor, I can certainly take any questions that your council might have at this point.
Council, have any questions for Tom? Tom, thanks so much.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
First, I have to say, yes, they were very diligent and very, very thorough, which is a good thing. So, now what I want to do is talk to you more about numbers. My favorite thing. Chad? There we go. Okay, so, we're going to go through some graphs very, very briefly, and let me talk to you a little bit about our numbers. The first screen that you're looking at here shows all of the city's revenues. I think what's most noteworthy is that about 70% of the city's total revenue is generated by our utilities. The other 21% is generated by general fund, and often, there's a misnomer among folks, and they think that more of our revenues come actually from taxes than is truly the case. Okay, then, of course, we're going to look at citywide expenditures, and similarly to the revenues, about 61% of the city's expenditures are generated by our utilities, and about 29% are generated by the general fund. So, this slide shows you a four-year trend pictorially. And so, what we see here is that in the year that we just completed our 2016 fiscal year, our revenues were up about 7%, which is $1,114,757 over the previous year, and expenditures were down 3%. So, that sounds really, really good, but I would caution you to remember that this was the year that we switched from being self-insured to fully insured for our health insurance, and so, the reserve that we had, which we were required to have when we were self-insured, which was about $1,136,000, had to be shown as revenue in this year when we, and went back into our fund balance. So, that $1,114,000, unfortunately, folks, isn't really the profit that it sounds like it might be. It's just a one-time revenue source. Okay, so about, only about 40% of the general fund revenue, as you can see on this screen, is actually generated by property tax. We have many other kinds of revenue sources, and you can kind of see, it's a little bit small, the different functional areas, other taxes and licenses, unrestricted intergovernmental revenues, restricted intergovernmental revenues, and what is included in each one of those is actually found on page 20 in our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which is the pink booklet all of you have received, to which I would also say a paper copy is available at the library, and it is also online on our website, because I know everybody will want to go home and study up on it. Okay, there's a four-year trend on our general fund revenues, and as you can see pictorially, again, it looks pretty good overall. I would want to mention a few things that were up and down in terms of revenues, just as general riveting information. You know, this was a year that we lost $189,000 in privileged license revenues, something that, for the most part, we're still sulking about.
Yes.
Electric building plumbing permits were down a little bit, rough trash fees were up, occupancy tax was up. Our current year average tax, which is what we usually call property tax, was basically flat, which is something we talked about during the budget process. Motor vehicle taxes were up a little bit, and community house food sales were up a little bit. Sales tax has continued to climb since the opening of Morganton Heights a couple years ago. We have been the recipient of more state grants this year than we had in previous years, and actually, our surplus sales were up significantly. I think it's interesting to know that that number in the general fund was $204,000. That's a lot of surplus to sell. Let's go on to the next slide, general fund expenditures. So, this is broken out by, again, by functional area. About 40% of the general fund expenditures are incurred by public safety. Obviously, they're our largest department in the general fund. About 26% is in recreation, 16% by general government, which is, of course, our general administration, 7% by transportation, 6% by sanitation, and 5% is used to pay the general fund capital debt. So, I want to kind of distract everybody from that slide for just a minute and talk a little bit about our debt. This year, it increased by a half of 1%, which is virtually nothing, which is great news. Again, it's a sign of a very solid financial base. Our total citywide debt is almost $17 million, and I will say that the state has us perform a calculation that is called the legal debt margin, which is the state's response to us of how much money we could borrow. So, I thought for context, it was worth talking about that. Our legal debt margin, the amount of debt we could have, is $125,558,331. And again, our debt is $17 million, and that is across all funds. So, I think we're good there. General fund expenditures, here's the great news about this, they're going down. As you can kind of see there, for the most part, the great news is that it's a boring-looking slide, which is, in this case, something to be really happy about. There's really not much really there to talk about, so we're going to move on. This is available fund balance. Every once in a while, somebody will say, "Well, how much could we spend? How much money do we really have that we could spend?" So, I just want to talk for a second that that's what the screen tells you. It tells you how much in the general fund we could spend. It works kind of like a checkbook. On payday, we know individually, we write checks for all the bills we have in our hand, and then we subtract the commitments that we know we're going to have to pay, and what is left then, well, then what is left, we put some aside for an emergency, and then what's left is what we know we can go buy groceries with. And that's kind of what you're looking at here in front of you with your unassigned fund balance, which is how much we could, how much we have at the beginning of the year, excuse me, at the end of the year. How much we appropriated, how much we put aside of that money to spend in the current fiscal year, we thought we would have to. Then we have our encumbered purchase orders, which is legal binding contracts we had that were ongoing across fiscal years, and then the council has directed us to always have a 15% reserve as our emergency fund, should we ever need them. And so, the answer to the question is, in the general fund, how much more could we spend? And the answer to that is about $4 million. It's up slightly over last year. Yes?
Karen, 15%. What would that care if we got no money coming in?
About six months of general fund expense.
That would care for six months. Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Let's hope that never happens. Proprietary fund revenues, that's an accounting term for our utilities, and as you can see by the very large green section, about 68% of our utility revenue is generated by electric. And the other three are actually very close in revenue, with 11% being generated by wastewater, 12% by water, and then 9% by compass. Here, you can look at a three-year trend again, a four-year trend, excuse me, which shows that we had a 2%, we had a slight increase in our water revenue, we had a slight decrease in our sewer revenue, and electric and compass revenues were quite similar. In compass, the story is what the story has been. Internet and telephone sales continued to increase, and video sales continued to decrease while the programming cost continues to increase. Expenditure breakdowns on our utility funds, 71% of that is electric, 11% in water, 9% in wastewater, and 9% in compass. Looking at our four-year trend again, water expenditures were basically constant, wastewater's expenditures were up due to an increase in chemical costs, which we knew about. Again, that's information's been brought in front of you before during this past fiscal year. Both the electric revenue and the electric expense were down, which was primarily due to very moderate weather conditions. And again, cable expenditures, as I just said, were up due to the ever-increasing programming costs. To summarize this, I want to throw just a couple of numbers at you real quick. The city has $117,124,329 more in assets than it has in liabilities. Now, obviously, most of that is capitalized assets or fixed assets, including our infrastructure. Overall, the utility fund showed an increase of a little over $2 million for the year. Now, after that, we have to subtract out from that $2 million our outstanding commitments, which are our purchase orders, which were about $1.5 million. So, overall, for our utility funds, they had an overall profit of a little over $650,000. and fifty thousand dollars. The general fund showed an increase of about two point five million. Now, out of that, we had one point two million in encumbrances, as we said earlier, and the insurance was about a million, one hundred and thirty-six thousand. So that drops the general fund profit down to eighty-five thousand, one hundred and five dollars. That's pretty amazing, pretty close. So citywide, we netted an increase for about seven hundred and forty thousand dollars. So I would say, overall, we had a good year. I am more than happy to answer any questions that you have about this or talk more. I would be missed if I didn't thank you for your leadership on behalf of our community and certainly on behalf of my staff. And I'd also want to thank my peers for the great job they do in sticking to the budget and being very responsible in how they spend city taxpayer money.
Counsel, have any questions for Karen?
No questions, but just a statement that, "Good job."
Thank you, John.
Thank you again, Karen.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Gentlemen, I need a motion to accept the audit report as submitted.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Tom and Karen, thank you so much for a great audit. Thank you. The next order of business is to consider the changing of the city council meeting date for January two thousand and seventeen. Sally?
Yes, our regular meeting is scheduled for January second, which is the day to observe the New Year's holiday, so would ask that you change that, consider changing that from the second to the ninth.
To have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, I believe, is the consent agenda?
It is. We'll just let you know that Jim Gallagher in Gastonia and Barry Hayes in Granite Falls were elected to the Board of Directors for the Power Agency in November.
Thank you.
Consent agenda before you tonight actually has, four, five, six, seven items, make sure I get that right, has actually seven items on it, and we would consider that you consider those in one motion. We're happy to discuss anything separately. For those of you viewing at home, that includes minutes from a special meeting held on September twenty-sixth, closed session minutes on November seventh, tax releases in the amount of four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars and forty cents, and then some award of bids for the return activated sludge pump replacement at one hundred and five thousand dollars, well under budget. Consideration of application for taxi cab franchises, that is required two readings, so we will bring that back to you again in January for ultimate passing, a budget amendment to receive funds in comma, some grant money to help with the expenses for a conference there of a thousand, seventy-five dollars, monies for the DARE program, and some corresponding canteen money, two thousand dollars in public safety, and then finally, five thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars from an insurance reimbursement for replacing a gator in recreation.
Would counsel like any items removed from the consent agenda? If not, I'll accept a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
To have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Next on the agenda is a public hearing. Called to order a public hearing to consider a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the local government commission for approval of an installment financing contract for paving projects under General Statute one oh six A dash twenty. I'll ask city council attorney to give us the background on that, if you could.
I'll try.
Sure, I'll be either one of us.
Sally, I promise you.
I'll be glad to. This is the massive paving and improvement project at Mountain View that we did some time back, that you approved. And remind you that at our last meeting, we reported to you that the local government commission, when we contacted them in the beginning, had said we did not need to have a public hearing for this and to move forward. And then, in reviewing our audit, they have indicated they would like for us to do that. So you called for that last meeting. We took bids on this project. It's a million, sixty-five thousand, five hundred dollars. It was financed at one point six percent for a term of fifty-four months. First Citizens was a successful bidder on that project. We have basically completed it and are making the debt payments, but we need to have this public hearing and supply the local government commission with what they have asked for.
Would anyone like to speak for the public hearing? Seeing no one, public hearing is closed. I need some motions, please, counsel.
I move we adopt a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the local government commission for approval of an installment financing contract for paving projects under General Statutes one sixty A dash twenty.
I have a motion to have a second. Thank you, Councilman Simmons. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimous. Need a second motion, please?
Move to award and reaffirm the contract to the installment financing of the project by First Citizens Bank for the principal amount of a million, sixty-five thousand at one point six zero percent interest for a term of fifty-four months.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, just a very minor, there's a typo there. That should have been one million, sixty-five thousand, five hundred.
Five, yeah. Okay, put the five hundred. Okay. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimous. Okay. Next, we'll have a public hearing. I call to order the public hearing to consider a zoning ordinance text amendment to section four point six, point six A of the Morganton Zoning Ordinance, changing parking with the Central Business Zoning District to require no parking either off-street or on-street for any use. Counsel?
Sally?
I'm going to take this one, too. You'll recall that we just went through a very extensive process to rewrite our zoning ordinance. And as we did that in looking at the Central Business District, we believe in that large document that we let slip by the parking requirements for the Central Business District, which are the blocks in downtown proper. When you have a project in downtown or a building, it is not normal to require them to have parking on the piece of property in which their building is going to be on, which our current zoning ordinance does require prior to this change. So the planning commission has looked at this. They unanimously recommend this for approval. Public hearing notice was advertised properly, and now it comes before you. Staff also believes this is accurate and the right thing to do, and that it is in keeping with our Mission 2030 plan, and that it is normal in downtown and downtown development that you don't require parking on the same property for the project.
Okay. Would any member of the public like to speak on the Central Business Zoning District to require no parking either off-street or on-street for any use? If not, we'll close the public hearing.
And may I clarify one thing, because we did have a question, and we're not saying that we're not requiring parking in downtown. Obviously, we have to have parking in downtown. It just doesn't have to be just exactly adjacent to anything that happens. You have to have adequate parking in downtown for what happens. We did receive a call from a citizen who had seen this in the newspaper and was concerned that we were doing away with parking in downtown, but that is not the case.
Thank goodness. Thank goodness.
Yeah.
Motion concern whether the requested amendment is in compliance with the Morganton Mission 2030 goals and objectives.
We have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
If I may.
Please.
On that motion, Mr. Mayor, I think we got something a little bit misprinted there. The motion would be that the requested amendment is in compliance, rather than saying concerning whether it is, be that the requested amendment is in compliance with the Mission 2030.
Thank you for keeping us straight.
That one's pretty important, so.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Need a second amendment, a second motion, please?
I move we adopt the text amendment to section four point six, point six A for the Morganton Zoning Ordinance, changing parking within the Central Business District, zoning district, to require no parking either off-street or on-street for any use.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Any changes, Louie?
No, that one's fine.
Okay. Next, we need to have a public hearing to consider a resolution adopting the filing of an application. So I'll call open a public hearing to consider a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the local government commission for approval of an installment financing contract under General Statute one oh six A dash twenty for the Community House renovation project phase two. Anyone, let's have discussion. Sally, will you talk about phase two, please?
Sure, happy to. You'll recall back in September, we had a special council workshop to look at the phase two proposals for the Community House renovation. This includes some modernization of the Cobb Room, new restrooms, creating new meeting rooms downstairs along with restrooms, a new public entrance that would be on the lower level, easier handicap accessibility, because you would have access to the elevator to get upstairs, also the installation of an elevator in this building, which is very necessary. At that time, you gave us permission to move forward to work with Glazer Architects to get the bids out. We did just that. We had nine contractors that attended the pre-bid for this project. Seven of those ended up ultimately bidding, which is pretty great participation. The bids ranged within about two to three hundred thousand dollars of each other. The lowest responsive bid was received from W.C. Construction Company, that is in Winston-Salem, and the amount for that is one million, one hundred, six thousand. You're going to be considering awarding the contracts for this after you've held this public hearing, authorizing us to file this with the application with the local government commission. We have plans to finance this with an installment purchase contract, and you'll hear later tonight about the bids for that. Basically, this is going to go before the local government commission, and they will get presented with the deal. You will award these. Can tell you that we did receive a responsive bid from BB and T. The total amount being financed is a million, two hundred and ninety thousand for fifteen years at an interest rate of three point two three percent.
Anyone like to speak on the resolution for the Community House and budget amendment? Not. Close the public hearing.
I move we adopt a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the local government commission for approval of an installment financing contract under General Statutes one six zero A dash twenty for the Community House renovation project phase two.
Thank you, John. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimous. Okay, let's see, we're through the public hearings.
We are.
We are through the public hearings.
Yes.
Okay.
Moving on to other business.
Other business, just one second here. Okay. Under other business, we have the consideration of award for design engineering services for phase two of the Community House renovation project. Sally?
Since we have now been approved to file an application with the LGC, we need to also approve the contracts for the rest of the project in order to get it completed. This is the architectural contract from Glazer. They have done all the work thus far and would propose that they continue to do that since they are, you know, understand the project and know as much about it as we do, almost, quite honestly. This is for the remainder of this. This will provide architectural bidding, negotiating, construction administration, structural engineering, plumbing and mechanical, and electrical engineering services, and that fee is fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
What's the pleasure of the counsel?
I move to approve entering into a contract with Glazer Architecture for architectural and engineering services for the Morganton Community House renovation for phase two in the amount of fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, contingent upon the LGC approval and the project moving forward.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second. Sally, just for clarification, this is for the design and engineering services only, correct?
Correct, and carrying it all the way through the final, I mean, site inspections, oversight, all of those things.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimous.
And for clarification, a part of the one million, two hundred and ninety thousand dollars that we have approved the application for the financing for, this amount is included in that.
Okay. Now, we have the consideration of the awarding the construction contract for phase two Community House renovation project. Sally?
So this is the part for the contractor, W.C. Construction, that we just talked about. Again, we had seven bids. They were all really good bids and really close, looking at a construction period of a hundred and eighty days, a hundred and eighty calendar days from the notice to proceed, which we think would happen sometime in January, would be that occurrence. The local government commission has this on the agenda for their January third LGC meeting, so we would expect that they would look at it then, we would get our approval, and then we would move forward to starting it. The base bid that you would be awarding to W.C. Construction would be one million, one hundred, six thousand. There are three alternates as well that we talked about in the process included in that. Alternate one, the lobby fireplace at six thousand. Alternate two, the stairwell improvements at six thousand. And alternate three, the industrial wallpaper at nine thousand, making this contract a total of one million, one hundred, twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Okay. What's the motion of, what's the?
Pleasure.
What's the pleasure of the counsel, please?
I move we approve entering into a contract with W.C. Construction Company for the Morganton Community House renovations phase two in the amount of one million, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, contingent upon approval of the LGC at its meeting, January third, two thousand and seventeen meeting.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
A second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is consideration of the award of bids for the installment purchasing financing for phase two renovations for the Community House and a budget amendment. Sally?
And I believe that this is the last action tonight related to this project. So in order to get the interest rate, we sent out banking proposals to seven banks. BB and T was the only bank that responded, but with a responsible bid, we believe. We'll tell you that the interest rate is above three percent, and that is because this is going to be considered a non-bank qualified borrowing, because it is closing in the month of January two thousand and seventeen. That means this is going to be considered two thousand and seventeen debt for us, and we are going to be issuing more than ten million dollars worth of debt in that one year, because we have the large waste treatment plant project coming up, which is almost ten million dollars itself. So we will be paying a higher interest rate than had we done this as a non-bank qualified interest rate, almost fifty basis points is what that means. However, I still think for a fifteen-year borrowing, a three point two percent interest rate is still pretty darn good. We'll also tell you that, at the time that we had the special meeting, if you recall, the professional estimator that had estimated the construction drawings and stuff for the project had said that it would be about one point four million, and that was without the engineering cost added to that, and we came in at one point one, so we feel pretty good about that. So tonight, you have Branch Banking and Trust at three point two three percent for fifteen years, and then, obviously, we need a budget amendment to receive the installment purchase proceeds and to set up the project accounting to pay for this project.
So we will have two motions. What's the pleasure of the counsel?
I move to award a financing to Branch Bank and Trust Company at three point two three percent for a term of fifteen years in the amount of a million, two hundred and ninety thousand, subject to and conditioned upon approval by the local government commission.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second. Got to pay for it somehow, don't we?
That's right. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes.
I move to approve a budget amendment in the amount of $1,290,000.
Have a motion and a second. End of discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Next, we need the consideration to call for a public hearing to consider a petition from Crescent Communities LLC for the annexation of three separate tracks on or near North Green Street. Call on our city attorney to give some explanation, please.
That one is mine. The city has received a series of three petitions from Crescent Communities for voluntary annexation of three separate parcels, that all of which join the city limits. They are all nearby or adjoining each other. These are all located along 181 North Green Street or along Independence Boulevard. The first petition is for a very small corner. It can be described as the vacant lot in between the new Wal-Mart Neighborhood Market and the Dollar General store facing North Green Street. The front part of that parcel is already in the city limits, but a small corner, about 12,000 square feet at the back of the parcel, is not. The second parcel is much larger, it's some 37 acres. It is all of the unoccupied property owned by Crescent behind the businesses along North Green and then wrapping over along Independence Boulevard. The third parcel, of some 12 acres, is on the other side of 181, just beyond St. Mary's Church Road. It can be pictured as Crescent owns a little strip along St. Mary's Church Road that is already in the city. Then there's this property, then there's the Rock Ridge Farms property is beyond that. It's the old, includes the old barn where Crescent used to have its offices. All of these petitions are under the procedure for voluntary annexation. If you wish to proceed with these annex, oh, I should have added, all these properties are already in the ETJ and are already receiving city services, water and sewer in particular. If you wish to proceed, you would have to take two steps. One is to direct the clerk to review the petitions and state that they meet the statutory requirements, and then the second is to call for a public hearing. We have combined all three of these into one resolution, one certificate, and there would be one notice of public hearing, since they're all from the same petitioner and they're all in the same neighborhood or adjoining. So, those are the steps you'd have to take at this point.
What's the pleasure of the council?
A move we call a public hearing at the council's regular monthly meeting on Monday, January the 9th, 2017, at 6:15, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached pursuant to General Statutes Section 168-31, to consider the annexation of approximately 37.207 acres, identified as 925 North Green Street and located on Independence Boulevard. The .297 acre portion of the lot at 1015 North Green Street, not already within the city limits, and approximately 12.123 acres located on the east side of North Green Street, all of these properties being owned by Crescent Communities LLC, which has petitioned for such annexation.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Got a question.
Councilman Simmons?
If we already, if this property already has, we furnish some city power.
I think it's actually probably mostly Duke power.
It's mostly Duke power.
If not all.
My question is this, how does Crescent, how do they benefit by being taken into the city?
Being a part of.
Well, I can answer, I can answer the question as to the very small tract. As I say, that's an out parcel that when they sold off of the Wal-Mart Neighborhood Market, this is kind of an out parcel that was left, it's less than an acre. The front part, the front 80% of it, is already in the city. The person who wants to buy it, the developer who wants to buy that lot, naturally doesn't want it divided, and they want their whole, that parcel, all in the city. That part's easy. As to the others, Crescent just asked that they wanted to be annexed. I know of no information.
I don't think they think, Philip made, he had a conversation with them, I don't think they think it's a detriment for them to be able to sell that property for it to be in the city.
I guess Councilman Simmons, why would anybody not want to be in the city of Morganton?
That's a better.
Well, we'd be glad to pick the track.
My thought is, why would they want to pay taxes?
You look like you do, or playing director.
Questions like that.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, what I would add to that is typically, in the conversations that I had with Crescent, they, I ask if, you know, I said, "We are looking to annex a small portion, would you be interested in annexing the remainder of it?" And they, and they said, "Well, you know, we'd been thinking about doing that, we'd been meaning to call, and so, yes, we would like to do that." What I would offer is, and I haven't done any kind of analysis of adjacent fire districts or anything like that, but typically, a commercial development would like to take advantage of the ISO rating that is, that is held within the city limits. They also like to take advantage of inside-city rates as far as water and sewer and those types of things, too. So, it's just a bonus for them in attracting tenants and retail prospects for their properties, and so, they thought it'd be a good thing to be in the city of Morganton and thought it would be beneficial from that perspective.
Philip, what I hear you saying, it just increases the value of their property to be in the, to be in the city of Morganton, is that what I hear you say?
That's exactly right. That's what I said.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
And I guess technically, I need to certify to the sufficiency. We need a motion on that, don't we?
If I could ask, and it got somehow left out of that document, we would need a resolution, and if I can just present this so that one of the councilmen can make this motion, a resolution directing the city clerk to investigate the sufficiency of the petitions and certify them to council.
So move. Have a second.
We doubled them.
Second. Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Okay, next we have the consideration for a public hearing on January the 9th to consider an economic development grant with molded fiberglass. Sally?
Yes, the city has been working with BDI and Burke County on this project. One of our local industries is looking to expand and to invest in their facility and create new jobs, about an $8 million investment, 20 new jobs, and we are looking to hold a public hearing considering an economic development incentive to them. You will hold your public hearing in January, consider your agreement at that time, looking at an incentive of 50% of the new taxable investment over three years, and know that the county has already called for their public hearing on this.
What's the pleasure of the council?
A move to call for a public hearing on January the 9th, 2017, to consider an economic development grant agreement with molded fiberglass.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Next is consideration for authorization of a resolution to apply for a building reuse grant from the North Carolina Department of Commerce Rural Economic Development Division slash Project Stop. Sally?
Yes, we are also currently working with Burke County and BDI, and a local industry that is considering an expansion. For this one, we are working with the Department of Commerce on a building reuse grant. The grant request is for $1 million, requires a 5% local match that the city and the county would participate in, looking at 100 new full-time jobs to be created with this project as a possibility, and about a $6 million investment that is in the new facility that the company is considering. There would be additional capital investment in the new equipment, but the facility investment is all that's required for the grant. In order to get into the process, we have to adopt this resolution and make applications so that the Department of Commerce can consider this and award this grant.
What's the pleasure of the council?
A move we approve the resolution authorizing the city of Morganton to make application to the North Carolina Department of Commerce Rural Economic Development Division Building Reuse Grants Program for Project Stop.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second.
Second, and a comment, if I might, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Fleming?
I know from time to time, all of us on the council are spoken to by many of our citizens, who ask us, "What are we doing about economic development, and what are we doing about bringing more jobs into Morganton and Burke County?" I hope that maybe you folks that would be interested in that and in answering that question, I hope you might be either in our audience tonight, or you might be tuned in at home, watching these several projects on your TV screen. So, I think this is some, we're doing some good things here, and I commend all of our folks with the city who, and with BDI, for all of your diligent work in bringing this to fruition.
Thank you, Councilman Fleming. Any other questions? I have one, one question, Sally. So, City Morganton put up 2.5% of the local match, and Burke County, 2.5%, correct?
Yes, we will share the local match equally.
We have a motion, any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is consideration of authorization of a resolution to apply for a building reuse grant from the North Carolina Department of Commerce Rural Economic Development Division slash Project Seating. Sally?
This is another project that we are working on with the same group I've already talked about, Burke County and BDI. We are busy and working on a lot of things together, and that's really great for this county. This is another local industry that is looking to expand, and we have an opportunity to apply through the Department of Commerce for some grant monies that will help them, they need to do over $800,000 to a facility upgrade, looking at 32 new full-time jobs with this project. The grant request is for $320,000, would also require a 5% local match that Burke County and Morganton would share.
What's the pleasure of council?
Move to approve the resolution authorizing the city of Morganton to make application to the North Carolina Department of Commerce Rural Economic Development Division Building Reuse Grants Program for the project seating.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is consideration of change of lobbyist and approval of the new contract. Louie?
Thank you. Yes, this is, every year, of course, we come before you to request approval of a contract for our lobbyists in Raleigh, which the city has maintained for many years. And for many years, that firm handling our lobbying has been Manning Fulton and Skinner in Raleigh, who have served the city very well. That firm's lobbying department has undergone a dramatic change, and one of their key lobbyists, and certainly the person who has most closely dealt with the city in recent years, Michelle Fraser, has left Manning Fulton and Skinner to take a very similar position with a different law firm, Smithmore Leatherwood. In fact, to establish a lobbying and governmental affairs department for Smithmore Leatherwood, which is a large multi-state firm with its principal office in Greensboro, considerably larger firm than Manning Fulton, after a, and she wished us to continue having her represent Morganton. The Manning Fulton firm also wished us to continue that. The city manager and I have considered this very, very carefully, and while we are very appreciative of the work that Manning Fulton has done, we believe it would be the wisest choice for our future to contract instead with Michelle and the Smithmore Leatherwood firm. The fee will be the same as would have been with Manning Fulton. I would also add that I think it's only appropriate to say, we very much appreciate the work of Manning Fulton in particular, John McMillan, who's been a wonderful representative of Morganton, as many other clients, for many years in Raleigh. But we do recommend contracting for the year 2017 with Smithmore Leatherwood.
And it is for a long session.
For the, yes, which is always a larger fee. And as you will have seen from the attached letter, engagement letter from Michelle, she's detailed all the numerous services which would be provided, which is far more than just dealing with the legislature while it's in session, a great deal more indeed.
What's the pleasure of council?
Motion to approve a contract with Smithmore Leatherwood for a fee of $50,000 for professional lobbyist services concerning both the legislative and executive branches of the state of North Carolina for calendar year 2017.
Second. A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We have one addition to the agenda, and that is a request for a budget amendment for storm drainage repairs. I'll ask Sally to cover this.
Yes, this is an emergency repair that we have had to do. You've probably noticed work going on down at State Street, out in front of Wall Lumber, and we did have a storm drain failure there and had to do some repair work, and you have before you $75,719. That is the labor, the materials, and the repaving and resurfacing of that. Ronnie Franklin did the, FNS Contractors did the work for us, and we would ask you to approve this budget amendment. It is out of Powell Bill funds.
I make a motion that we approve the budget amendment and use Powell Bill monies in the amount of $75,719.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Is this $75,000 what has been completed to date?
Yes, it is. It does not include the railroad.
Does not include the railroad and that other sinkhole.
Correct.
Just the work on.
Just the work on State Street, and the work at Burger King Burger King is doing. That is Burger King's.
And if I might add that despite the name, State Street is in fact a city street and not a DOT street, so we are responsible for the drainage underneath it.
We have a motion and a second.
Believe me, if I thought I could have charged them, I would have.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Anything else? Council wish anything to come before the board? I would wish, like to wish all our citizens to have a great Christmas and a happy holiday season.
We'll see you at the parade.
The parade is December the 15th. Council's adjourned.
And let me just say, I know there was.